Welcome, everyone, back from break and to the City Council Work Session for January 14th. I just want to say, start out by saying a very big thank you to all of the City Manager and all of our staff for all the work that went into the state of the city. Thank you so much for making that go so smoothly. We all, I know we all appreciate that. And then that gives me a nice segue into, I guess you get it twice tonight. You'll get your first work session welcome and then you'll get your first regular council meeting welcome. So we'll just welcome you all over the place tonight, Greg, but we're glad you're here. And so, welcome to the first, and you got a good one. You got heavy-duty stuff right off the, right off the bat. We're very glad that you're, that you're here with us. So, on our agenda this morning, our committee reports, and since we just came off a break, I certainly would understand it if we didn't have that much to, to say committee-wise, but certainly want to give you all a chance to say that. Anything that you want to, anything that you want to share on any committee report you want to make, either one is fine. So, wants to round?
No, I'll pass.
You'll pass?
Well, I'd just like-
All of those games.
Yeah.
And welcome back to you, George.
Thank you. I'd just like to say I'm glad to be back, you know, being laid up for the entire winter break that we were on. I did get to watch quite a few football games, so.
That's what I was referring to.
But, you know, I would, I had a major surgery and I was home for a week and I had a little bit of an episode. And I just want to thank the gentleman from Station 6 that responded to the 911 call and took care of me and got me to the hospital. A great bunch of people, talented, efficient, and, you know, I can't, I was talking to the chief about it earlier, the young EMT that was primarily taking care of me called exactly what was wrong with me. And the most important impressive thing that I saw the whole night was, was in the back of the ambulance on the way to the hospital, and the ambulance was making a turn just as this young man was trying to insert an IV into my arm, and the lights went out. And he got it accomplished, and I don't know how he did it. I was impressed.
I'm going to hear another story.
But I'd also like to thank the staff at Sacred Heart River Bend, phenomenal group of people, all the doctors, nurses, and technicians that took care of me. But most importantly, my wife, following my release from the hospital, was every day either back to a doctor or to a clinic or something, and she was, she was there the whole time, as well as continuing on with her normal job. So, you know, it's, it's nice when you find a partner that's willing to go that extra 10 miles to make sure that things are taken care of, so a big thank you to my wife. And moving on to one other thing, I'd just like to congratulate the Sheldon Boys Football Team, another state championship. So, congratulations to them, their coaches, and especially the parents.
And welcome back, George.
Thank you.
Daddy?
Thank you. I'll be going to a Workforce Partnership Executive Committee meeting tomorrow. I can't tell you anything about that, except that they continue to do good work. I just came back from a board meeting for National League of Cities, and I haven't had any sleep to speak of, so if I fall asleep, somebody wake me. I'm disappointed we still don't have a decision on City Hall on the agenda. I know we have a work session, but National League of Cities Board talked about what we're going to emphasize in the immediate future. There are a lot of things we're working on, but the three top items that they think something can happen on soon are the old one of immigration reform, and the President has said that he's going to definitely see that something happens soon, so they're pretty, everyone's pretty optimistic that something will happen. Tax-exempt municipal bonds, I don't even know, does that affect us if the municipal bonds are tax-exempt? It affects some people more than others, but to keep the, to keep the tax exemption, and that's something the President is not far necessarily. And then a big thing which doesn't affect us is sales tax, and, but it affects most of the states, and we do all work together to help everybody, but it's a very big thing for a lot of places that depend largely on sales tax, that people are buying online and they aren't getting the income. Then other items that we're talking about, and this, the gun control was, we are sending a letter about gun control to Vice President Biden, but it turns out there's a lot of controversy among officials. There are people saying, "I want my Second Amendment rights." And one man who's a counselor somewhere said that he buys a few guns every year, and he has the right to buy those guns, but something should be done. Other items that are on the agenda but not, we decided to emphasize three things at first, but, but there's still a climate change, what to do about that, reforming, no child left behind, workforce reinvestment, of course, transportation, we only have a two-year bill, as I guess you all know, but there's great concern about getting a longer term one, and unfunded mandates still. We had a White House briefing, which we weren't really in the White House, but they call it the White House, we were in the Eisenhower Building, with City, with government officials, David Agnew, Director of, of, Director of Intergovernmental Affairs, assured us that the voices of local elected officials really matter to this administration, and that's evident from the fact that the officers of NLC and the staff members are frequently called to the White House for briefings and for, and ask for advice. And he said that, according to him, the big issues that will get immediate attention are immigration and guns. Ray LaHood also spoke to us and about transportation, about the fact that there's only a two-year bill, and he emphasized that any rebuilding needs to be built to the standards that would withstand another sanding. And he's advocating, or considering at least advocating toll roads as a way to pay for the roads. We also heard from Cecilia Munoz about immigration, and she said that we spend more on immigration enforcement than on all other aspects of law enforcement. I hadn't heard that before. And the Assistant Director of Policy said, Jay Williams, who's an assistant to David Agnew, said that they really want recommendations on gun matters from local officials. And I think I'm out of time. Thank you.
Going to pass in the interest of our later discussion.
Claire?
Don't report.
Chris?
I'm fine.
Greg?
I have no-
What are you going to report?
I have no committee, so I don't have any report.
He's committee-less for a little while.
All I can do, all I can do is second Betty's report on the transportation legislation. I've been working on that through the American Public Transportation Association, through LTD, for a number of years. I was part of the first task force for what is now MAP 21, and now there's another task force being formed, trying to get another six-year bill, which is a collective of all of the transportation associations, including APTA and ASHTO and all of the rest of the alphabet soup of acronyms that make up the transportation advocacy community. So, you know, we're, we're not two years, we're down to about 21 months now, I think, in the, left in the bills, so we got to get something done very, very quickly and find a way to fund it, is the other thing, since the Highway Trust Fund is broken.
I am going to be leaving in the wee hours tomorrow morning to go to DC to attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors, where we'll be talking about a lot of the same things that the League of Cities has been discussing. And one of the things that I'm going to be doing while I'm there is that Bob Doppelt, that many of you know from here, with the Resource Innovation Group, also belongs to an organization called Climate Summit 2013, which is, and he was in DC last week, being at the White House to try to get the President to have a Climate Summit this year in 2013. So, one of the things that I'm going to be doing at the conference is the mayors to sign on to a petition to ask the President to do that, and we'll see how all that works out. My experience is when mayors from across the country ask for things and work together on things, they do seem to get people's attention, so hopefully we'll see something happen in that regard. City Manager?
Nothing to report.
All right, well then, I guess Alan just watched his opportunity. So now we're going to go into the next part of our work session, which is, the manager is, will you come in with the FY14 Plan of Action?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll be using the slides, and we'll be, we're passing out those slides that you can also have in front of you. This is our agenda this evening, just to recap some of the background and how we got to where we are right now, review the four-part Plan of Action that we've talked about, talk a little bit about the community input that has gone on over the last several years that have influenced our recommendation and Plan of Action. More specifically, we'd like to talk about my recommendation with respect to a possible new city fee, a little bit about next steps, and of course, leave plenty of time for questions and discussion. Just as a reminder, where we are going into this year's budget, we are looking to close a $6 million ongoing gap. You might remember from last year, when we went into the budget, we anticipated coming back for a $3 million gap that we'd have to work on, and as we mentioned before, primarily due to a reduction in property tax and the amount of property tax we're collecting, that gap has grown to $6 million. And so that's really the ongoing issue that we're trying to resolve. I'll talk about a couple others here in a minute. The other, the other piece that we have talked about is, in addition to the $6 million ongoing gap, there are some one-time dollars that the Council has appropriated into this year's budget that will not be included in next year's budget unless we are able to turn those into ongoing funding. At least they wouldn't be proposed in my budget. And these are things, the fire company at Station 2, that was put in this year as one-time funding. The Human Services Commission funding for this year was, I think it was $150,000 that was put into that, that's one-time money. The homelessness funding is this most recent round of $250,000 that the Council appropriated towards the end of last year to help with our prevention and intervention and provision of homelessness services. Buckley House was actually put in as a two-year add two years ago, and so this is the last year of that. Along with that, there was some money that was put in for gang prevention. And then lastly, as late as December during your supplemental budget, we, you appropriated some additional one-time money towards economic development. That included our loan program, and also some additional dollars that we've used in the past for things like helping get additional airline routes into Eugene as part of a overall economic development plan. So, it's a $6 million of ongoing, this is additional dollars in addition to that, these are one-time dollars that we're also talking about. Just to recap of where we've been over the last four years, we've come a long way down on this journey, and what we have done is we've concentrated and focused on living within our means. We've reduced our general fund expenditures by $24 million over those four years, eliminated more than 100 positions, and have continued to maintain a responsible reserve throughout that time. But we've also continued to invest in community goals that we have said are important. Public safety, downtown police officers is a good example of that. We have invested in downtown itself, and there's a lot of energy and activity that have continued to work. Been a lot of discussion and investment in our homelessness challenges, economic development through loan programs and others, and so we have recognized the fiscal challenges and have done a lot to meet those challenges. We have also said we want to continue to focus outward and invest in community goals. At the same time as we've been shrinking our organizational footprint, we've also placed a high priority on minimizing impacts into the community, knowing that the things that we are providing are important for the community at all times, but also particularly as we've moved through this recession. We do know there have been some impacts to parks maintenance, for example, and last year, excuse me, as part of the budget process, we did reduce our library branch hours, and over the last couple of years, we have been making changes throughout the organization from efficiency standpoint, but we really have worked to minimize those impacts out into the community. And we've done this without raising taxes in the general fund, and we've kept our fees minimal. So, we have been doing a lot as we've moved through this recession. This is a chart that I really think tells a good story. What this says is, is for those seven years from FY03 to FY09, our average annual growth in our general fund operating budget, which is really what we're talking about here, was 6.2% per year, and in the last four years, that has gone down to 0.6%. So what that shows is we're really driving down our expenditures, and that 0.6% included absorbing our library levy, as well as absorbing some significant increases in our purse costs. So we've been working very hard collectively, the Council and the Budget Committee and the staff, to really drive down that expenditure curve, but as we've talked about, we're kind of at that point where the gains will be marginal when we compare it to a $6 million gap. The items in blue are the four broad strategies that we have been employing over the last four years. These are consistent, they haven't changed. We have continually focused on how to live within our means while maintaining an adequate and responsible reserve. From an economic prosperity perspective, we continue to invest into the community, and we talked about as part of our Plan of Action this year, to renew some emphasis on that. I talked about investing in our community goals, excuse me, and also cost control. The piece that's new this year that we started the conversation several months ago was the possibility of adding new revenues into our budget portfolio, first to stabilize the services, and then to think about how we sustain those into the long term. So that's the new piece. This is a Plan of Action that I and our staff have proposed, moving into this year, has four components to it. First of all, for the long-term financial sustainability for us and the community, we've talked about the need to grow our tax base through economic development and redevelopment and in accordance with Envision Eugene. So that's an important long-term strategy that needs to continue to move forward, that is not going to be able to stabilize the $6 million gap that we find ourselves in right now, and so we have three other pieces to do that. First is, is we will continue this year, and we will continue every year, to try to find efficiencies, different partnerships, new ways to modify our footprint reduction, and in that, saving some dollars. As you know, we have captured large portions of that, in that 24 million, but there is some additional that we will be working towards this year. We've talked about transitioning the general fund portion of our parks O&amp;M costs from the general fund over into the stormwater fee, and that process has kicked off. There'll be a public hearing on a proposed ordinance coming up next Tuesday for that, and then we'll be coming back later this month to council with potential action for that, so there will be some more conversation for that. And the fourth component is a proposed new city service fee, which is really what our focus is tonight on our conversation. From a community perspective, we have spent a lot of time in the community in a variety of forms over the last many years. Some have been extensive processes, Envision Eugene comes to mind, Eugene counts, but we've also, through Budget Committee discussions, meeting the challenge task force, surveys that you have seen some results of, and we'll review a couple of those tonight, we have gathered and listened to a number of people and constituencies in this community, and so the proposal that we have shaped both the four-part Plan of Action as well as this specific fee, has been informed by all of this information over the last several years. This recaps a little bit of the Gary Manross survey that you've seen before, and really what this says is, is two different surveys, both scientifically valid surveys, Gary was here in December, so you've met Gary. He's also one that we used during the street bond election, and the first time I was successful with that, but in July 2012, and then again in November 2012. Essentially what this says is, the majority of the people in the community have said they are willing to pay a modest fee to maintain the services that we now enjoy. What they didn't say is, is that they want to contend to buy a lot of new things, but they do want to maintain what we currently have and prevent the erosion of our services any further. And they also talked about what's the preferred mechanism for doing that. In the July survey, we surveyed a variety of things that have been out there, business license, for example, income tax, restaurant tax, et cetera. What you can see in that initial survey, a monthly service fee was the one that people said yes to primarily, and then in November, we really wanted to test that even further against property tax, and overwhelming majority compared to the property tax said a monthly city fee would be the preferred method of moving forward on a new revenue. And this talks about, so what is it that they're interested in funding with the fee? And I won't go into lots of detail, but essentially, there's consistency between July and November. One piece in July, you'll notice, we talked about street bike path maintenance, of course, with the renewal of the bond. In November, that really takes into account that particular piece, but on both surveys, there's a couple pieces that are pretty high. Public safety, economic development, human services are all very high on that, as well as people are interested in avoiding cutbacks in some of our quality-of-life services as well, and so there's some consistency around that, and we've used this as we move forward. We also talked about and surveyed the discretionary spending of the revenues that would come in from council, how important is it to be very specific versus allowing specificity? Really what the data suggests is, yes, specificity counts, but we also are willing to provide some flexibility to the council to spend those dollars within essentially some general categories that we're wanting to fund, and so the proposal that we're making really accounts for both of those. We also tested some things, surveyed some portions that we have found from our experience with the road bond to be very important, and we're really just confirming that. Restrictions on how the money is spent is important, but it, really what it comes back to is that not all of it needs to be restricted, but there are some specificity restrictions that are important. People have said we do want to put a cap on the fee. The fear is, is that once you get it put in place, will it just continually get turned up indefinitely, and people have said, "No, we need a cap on that." Talked about an oversight committee, we have one of those with our street bond, that's worked very well, and so this would be a confirmation of that. And then a five-year review. Want to emphasize, this is a five-year review, not a five-year sunset, but this is a much more formal review that the council would then consciously say, "How's it working? Is it meeting our goals, or are we doing what we want it to do?" And there's some interest in that as well. So, given that background, here's what my recommendation is for this new city fee, and I want to try to use this graph, which is a separate handout that we handed out to you, to try to put the pieces into context with what it is we're accomplishing, with which kinds of components. So let's just start under the goals. There's really three goals that this, the Plan of Action is trying to accomplish. One is closing the $6 million gap. The second is, is turning those one-time expenditures that we just talked about into ongoing revenue source to pay for those, that's the 1.5. And then the third piece of that is restoring library services, which over the last several years, we have reduced. Last year, there were branch library services, and in subsequent years, we have purchased fewer periodicals and books and things like that. So there's really three goals that we're talking about with respect to this Plan of Action. There's three components on the right side of how to meet those goals. One is footprint productions, that is what we're continually trying to do with efficiencies, and we will, we expect to find plus or minus $800,000 of efficiencies in this next year's budget. The second is transitioning parks to stormwater, which is 4.5 million. It frees up $4.5 million from the general fund to help close the gap, and then a new city service fee that would accomplish a bit of the closing of the gap, funding the one-time services and restoring the library, and that's about a $3 million piece of that. So that is to try to get a sense of what our goals are and which components match back to those goals. So we're closing the gap, all three of the components, a portion of that will close part of that gap. Funding one-time services really is, the new service fee would do that. Restoring libraries, the new service fee would connect it to that. So this is, as we start getting a little bit more detail, what we're talking about is really what the voters have said, the majority of the voters have said, is they're willing to pay up to $10 per month to maintain services. So, putting a cap on a modest fee of $10 per month, the intent of that would be to be paid by residents and dwelling units and businesses, administered in a cost-effective and efficient manner. We're still working with Eweb to find out what's the best way to do that and how to do that, and so there are still some unanswered questions with that, but we're working through that with them. Of course, accountability and transparency are very important to us, and then putting that on the May 13 ballot, May 13 ballot. So here's more specifically what this says, and remember that on that one chart, the use of fees really does three things. It helps close the gap, it funds one-time services and restores the library, so all of those components are in here, and this set of services represents about $3 million. So just, so in the simplest way of saying this is, if you send this out to the voters exactly how we recommend it, it would say, "Are you voter willing to pay up to $10 a month to continue these services or have these services provided?" So that's what that says. Come back, right back to the question for that. The question that, the question that will come back is, so it says up to $10 per month, is that what it would be set at? The answer is no, it would be less than that. We would estimate, and I want to put on several caveats to this, be closer to $5 to $7 per month, and the reason why I put caveats on, remember, we still have to figure out how to work with Eweb on making very efficient collection and those kinds of things, but just to kind of give you a sense of that. So this is a, I also want to talk briefly about some things that we did consider, but we did not put on the list, and I wanted to talk briefly about why or why not things went on the list. The philosophy that we have used consistently throughout our budgeting process over the last four years, as we've gone through the recession, is, one, we want to continually have a balanced portfolio of services, balanced in the sense that we're trying to meet the best way we can all the objectives that are in the, articulated in the council vision and goals. So we've said all of those visions and goals are important, and how can we best balance those? We've been doing that. Another piece has been that, you know, how can we provide services in a way, and if we have to make some changes, that we're reducing but not eliminating services? And the third piece on this is, are we be consistent from year to year? And so the things that you see on the list, we've talked about over the last couple of years, so there's nothing new on that. And so- And so when we talk about fire, for example, we have talked about that the last couple of years as part of a proposed budget. And so that's not new. We've talked about human services. If you back on the other chart, one thing that's most consistent, one that's on there specifically is the second cahoots vehicle. We added the second cahoots vehicle two or three years ago, absolutely needed, just like all these services are needed. You don't want to make any of these choices. We are where we are, but given that, what we said is rather than eliminating cahoots, we would reduce that back to one cahoots rather than two, two cahoots vehicles. Same with libraries. We talked about a branch library operations. One option could be is we could just close the branches completely. And what we've said is, no, what we're really trying to do is continue to maintain services rather than completely eliminate it. So what you see on the left side are those things that are really from the previous chart. What you see on the right side are some things that we did consider but did not move forward into the new service fee. So again, restrictions on spending. What can you actually spend it for? We would recommend that those things on the four, the items on the left side, the new fee could be spent, of course, there would be fire and EMS, human services, economic development, library services restored. In a couple cases, very specifically, fire company, some branch library services, cahoots vehicles. So there would be some very specific things in there, but also some things that are not as specific, but they're only within those categories. So that's what means restriction on spending. Cap on the amount, we've talked about that, $10. Oversight committee, yes. Five-year review, not a sunset, but the review, yes. We also think it's important for, to include a social equity component to this. Eweb right now has a customer care program in which people that qualify, and really the qualifying range is $42,000 for a family of four, that says if you qualify and apply, you can receive up to $10 per year in assistance for your utility bill. What we would propose is that through this new fee, additional dollars get put into that customer care program, which now people that are eligible for that would also see that go against this fee as well. And so they are not paying as much, or they get a greatly reduced or completely reduced fee on this portion of the fee as well. We're still, we're still working through with Eweb on how that actually look and how that would be administered, but the intent would be is to provide that social equity piece to this fee as well. Our timeline right now is the work session all the way on the left. What we really do need is some specific guidance tonight, as you'll see in the motion, which allows us to now create the ordinance, which goes out, that can be posted and goes out to public hearing on February 4. And then prior to February 13, if you choose to put something out on the May 2013 ballot, we would need to know that by February 13. And so we have scheduled some work sessions to try to get us there. So just, this is our suggested motion. Proceed to the public hearing, capped at $10 fee dedicated to fire and EMS, human services, economic development, library services, includes an oversight committee, reviewed in five years, the limited income assistance, and placed on the May 2013 ballot. And with that, we're here for questions.
Thank you for that. I've got Mike and George Polling and Claire and Alan. Just, just a preliminary comment about the progress, progressivity of this and your limited income assistance. My, my only, I'm just trying to think about this, we've talked about it earlier. You still, as I understand the Eweb program, you still have to apply for it, and you aren't guaranteed that you will get it. There's a limited amount of funds, and when they're gone, they're gone. So then my expressed concern would be that everyone who fell into that low-income area would not necessarily experience the progressiveness that you've talked about in this, and that would be my, my concern.
So I think that's, that's one of those things that, as we get guidance from the council on those kinds of things, those are the kinds of things that we would continue to work with Eweb on. And so if the intent of the, if the council has a certain intent, then what we would do is work with Eweb to do the best that we can to ensure that that intent is met through them. And so if, I think actually, Eweb in the, in the recent past has not had problems fulfilling people that have applied. Don't they have enough money to meet those? Right, I think, so recently, it hasn't been an issue where there's been more applications and dollars available, but even if it were the case, if it's the council's, council's intent that anybody that's eligible for that has the ability to help make this a progressive fee, we would take that, work with Eweb to do our best to make sure that is actually implemented. That make sense?
All right, we'll start out with Mike.
Mayor, I'm going to need, excuse me, probably two or three rounds with all the information I want to present during the course of the conversation. The first thing I want to say is to say thank you to the manager and the staff for having done such hard work to come up with a multiple-point approach to this challenge. I think our city manager is one of the best in the history of our city, and I have nothing but very high regard for him. But having said that, I think that this is the exact wrong approach to how to deal with this problem. I think that raising taxes when Eugene families are so economically hard-hit is fundamentally wrong. I think that this approach is out of touch with the reality of where people live today, and although we have had good polling on people's level of acceptance with this, I think we may not, and I, and I grant that I may not know the full extent to which this is done, because I haven't seen the full extent of the survey yet, but I think it may not, it may be possible that we don't know the full analysis of, of the larger picture of when taken into account what the county may do, what a fuller ballot would look like with a number of measures on it come May, and what people's true response would be. I don't make these criticisms without other ideas. I have some of those, but I, I think that trying to raise taxes in this, this level of a bad economy sends a terrible signal. It's bad for local business, and it's bad for people. The right approach for us, I mean, from, from, from my idea of a principled perspective, is not to increase tax rates, but to increase our tax base, and for us not to create new kinds of taxes, but to create new taxpayers. Now, Councilor Zelenko was very funny when he mentioned that we don't have any magic pixie dust to increase local economy. And he's right. And we also don't have any magic pixie dust to make new taxes more affordable for families in Eugene when the economy is where it is today. But what we do have is an opportunity to increase our tax base in a much more significant way, and we haven't talked about it yet. And we don't have a comprehensive plan for it. There are 22,000 people who live inside the UGB and are not members of the City of Eugene. And if we had a comprehensive plan for asking and not demanding and not telling and not compelling, but making it a good idea for the roughly 10,000 families in River Road and Santa Clara who are not members of our community yet, who are not part of the City of Eugene, to annex and join the community, we would eliminate this deficit.
Next round?
Yes, ma'am. And I'll tell you how in the next round.
All right, George Polling.
Well, I agree with Mike. I, you know, I think raising taxes is wrong. However, by putting this out to vote in, in May, majority rules. And if the majority of the people in this community want to raise some money, they'll vote for it. If not, then they don't. My biggest concern with that is the competing measures like Mike brought up. You know, we don't know what the county's going to do, we don't know what the, the school districts are going to do. And after looking at the first paychecks of the year, you know, I'm nowhere near the president's level of $450,000 a year income, but I saw a two and a half percent decrease in, in wages. So being that this, this final survey was done in November before the tax increases are going to start mounting on us from the federal government, I don't know how the public's going to view that, whether they're going to say, okay, you know, we'll go ahead and continue with the amount of support. I'm all for moving this forward to a public hearing. I'd like to hear more about it. There's some things on here that concern me, and one of them is that I think that the council cannot alter what the money's being used for, because we have a pretty good idea right here at this table, what we need to do. Two years from now, four years from now, who knows what's going to happen and where that money's going to be spent by another council. So I think by locking it in that way, I think you give the voting public guarantees where that money's going to go. So I'm very supportive of making it where the council cannot alter it. I think a big piece is educating the public. I got a, received a phone call this afternoon from a local pastor who got flooded with emails and phone calls, and he said not one was in support of this. And so we started to discuss this, and part of it is, they only got part of the information. They don't know that it's going, they didn't know that it was going to go to a vote. They didn't know that it was a maximum of $10 a month, that we're not necessarily going to do that. So we need to really educate the public on that. I think the oversight is an excellent idea, and that's one of the must-haves on this, as well as the five-year review. Five years from now, who knows what the economy's going to be like? If we can get rid of it, if it passes, then we can. One thing that we need to do is make sure we don't make the same mistake did the county made back in the late 80s when the only law enforcement levy passed. And I don't know the exact number, but the voters agreed just to levy for, let's just put out the number, $4 million for the sheriff's office. Come budget time, that money showed up, but the board of commissioners took an additional $4 million from general fund monies and put it somewhere else. So basically, they were back to zero. So if we're saying this money is for continuing services, we need to make sure that we don't make that mistake, because that's the reason why they're owing 14 right now on their, their serial levies.
Great, we got Claire next.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate Councilor Polling's comments. I agree with a lot of your points about how to shape this proposal. I really appreciate the work the city manager and his staff have put into this, and I think you've brought us a very viable plan to bring out to the voters for them to say yea or nay. I think that's a critical part. I totally understand the, the consternation around the idea of raising a tax in this time, but I think the voters, if they are educated, can make an informed choice about whether or not they want to take on this extra fee within their own household and business budgets in order to fund services that we may otherwise have to see go away. So I think it's responsible for us to ask them that question and to frame it in a very clear and prescribed way with the checks and balances that have been described in, in the outline that the city manager has brought us. I, I have a few questions. Some of them are just quick pieces of information. In terms of the Buckley House funding and the gang prevention funding, how much were those figures respectively?
The combined total was like 450.
Can you separate?
Over two years.
What was Buckley House? Do you?
They weren't separated, but we can talk about how much we spent on them.
Well, I made the motion at 150 each for each year for Buckley House and 150 for gang, gang prevention.
Yeah, and we can go back and, yeah, we can go back and see how much actually was spent for both of those, and, and that was over a two-year period, and so this year's included as part of that second year.
So one of the things I like about the proposal, although I hear Councilor Polling's kind of caution about prescribing funding and then having things changed, that future councils may say, well, we really need to reallocate this to some other place. The job creation piece, what is that referring to specifically in terms of economic development programs?
Uh, two years ago, three years ago, two or three years ago, the budget committee and the council appropriated $300,000 towards job creation, economic development, one-time money. And that money has been used for things like supportive matches for airlines routes to come in here as part of an overall economic strategy. That was used for some.
Low-income loans.
Uh, low-income loans, we've been doing that. And so as part of the supplemental budget, what we said is, let's plus that back up to the $300,000 and try to have a, that's a one-time money. What this would do is turn that into an ongoing stream of dollars that we could continually provide towards economic prosperity kinds of activities, a lot of which could help us implement the envisioned Eugene as we move forward with that as well.
So just from the perspective of a voter, if I was presented with a ballot that said, you know, this funding will be used to retain fire company two at Station 7 and the second cahoot van and job creation, I'd want more specificity about what those economic development programs are. You know, it doesn't have to go down into the nitty-gritty, but a little bit more than just job creation and increased tax base. And I'm assuming that if we make a decision to move this forward, we'd get more details on how that oversight committee would be put together and who would serve on that and what its function would be?
Uh, yes, and we would envision that it could be similar to what is with the street bond. That would be one option for that. That's worked very well. Another option is that the budget committee is, is that oversight committee, so it really would be depending upon this body of how you'd want that to separate out. So it could, I think of the, think of the road bond model with the oversight committee, that was appointed actually by myself. They, they provide their end report to me, which we, we also then bring it to the council for council review.
Okay. And then I appreciate the mayor bringing up the question of the customer care program having funds that can run out depending on how many people apply for it. So I think it'd be very important for us, however we do the mechanism on that, that if folks meet the qualifications for the customer care program, that the fee is reduced or waived, not that it be contingent on there being funds in a program to do that. So I, I think that would be very important, that it wouldn't be left to whether or not there was enough money to give them a rebate on the fee. I think that'd be very important and would help alleviate concerns of people about a tax that has that social equity piece in it. Otherwise, I might take a second round, but that's what my questions were. Alan.
Yes, thank you for that. Good presentation, Mr. City Mayor. I'm generally supportive of this. We should be very clear that we're not doing this unilaterally, that we're sending it to ballot for choice or for the vote of the vote. So they'll find out if they want to do this or not. And if they say no, then, then we follow through with, with the cuts, but I think it's worth putting out for people to have a choice about it. I'm supportive of growing the tax base, and I think that should be our number one way of doing this. My problem with that is it's just not going to happen fast enough, so there's no pixie dust accelerant.
We have new term.
That will make it happen in the short term, which means big cuts to existing services and quality of life, and I would rather see us avoid that. So it, it absolutely has to have, for me, the lockbox for where it gets spent, so we need to be very specific. That's an absolute, that there's a cap, there's an oversight committee, and the five-year review, I think those are all essential parts of it. They were essential when we put together the package for the, the road bond as well, and I think that's partially why it was supported, other than just driving around. Would make you want to support that as well. On the Eweb program, I'm, I'm a little, I'm unconvinced whether or not that's the right mechanism. I share the concerns about, having worked the electric, you totally understand how that program works, and not everybody who's eligible applies, and therefore it's not as progressive as it might seem. And so, and if everybody that was eligible applied, Eweb would probably then be overrun as well. If this raises rates 10 bucks or five bucks a month, that pushes some people into this, being able to do that, so that might impact as well. So that needs to be looked at very carefully. I'm, I would like to see us look at potentially an exemption. I would like to see us look at potentially an exemption proposed to using that mechanism to reimburse people. And I'm not sure how we could, how feasible that is, but we do have computers, so I should be able to figure that out. So I'd rather see us do that. It's extremely important, oh, slide 19, 18, sorry. I'll have to put that back up there. But there were two columns, left and right, proposed funding, proposed new fee, I got that. But the alternative services considered, all those things on the right, I'm not, I wasn't clear, what happens to those? Are those, were those the things that you were considering funding and were therefore not funding them, so they are then...
In the budget.
No. They're in the budget, okay. So this was the things that betrayed us, what would be in the budget, what would be in the fee?
Correct.
So those, they stay?
They're just not, okay.
Correct, thanks. I think it's extremely important to have them educated and, especially around what we've done so far, the $24 million in cuts, the over 100 positions eliminated, the other strategies, and basically holding the line for the last several years. We have to really hammer down on how this works, what's it for, what happens if it fails.
Another round?
Better get in there now, just in case.
Okay.
Betty?
Oh, thank you. First questions. When the survey asked a question about the library, did people know that they were talking about increasing hours at the branch libraries, or did they just think it had to do with the main library?
I don't know how people interpreted the question. It wasn't, we can check for sure, but I don't think it, it didn't break it out specifically about, you're talking about the branch or the main library.
Whether you are talking about leaving the branch libraries part-time or whether you're threatening to cut the hours at the main library, because that would really upset people. So I think it's, I have questions about surveys anyway. Everybody knows that about the validity of them, especially since most people don't answer their telephones anymore and people with cell phones don't get surveyed, I think. Another question, has E-Web already agreed to collect this if we do it?
They have not agreed to collect it at the moment. We're continuing to work through that. I think from our perspective, whatever the mechanism is, our intent will be to make it very efficient and very easy.
And as, if people didn't pay it, and someone's in the audience who brought this, mentioned this, and I've heard of it before, but if people didn't pay this fee, then their utilities would be cut off, right?
Again, I think that depends on how it's collected and administered, if it's through E-Web or a different mechanism.
It's through E-Web, I mean.
Right now, but see, now this would be a new fee under the bill, and so all those questions haven't been worked out. The existing bill, that's correct, but the new bill, a new fee, we haven't worked that out with.
But I know now if you don't pay your, one of those fees that's on there, then you lose your utilities.
Right, with the existing fees, that's correct.
I'm, I'm, I think this would be much more difficult to oversee than the roads to have an oversight committee, because we know what roads are, and it's very easy to see if you repaired the roads or not, but when you talk about economic development and these are very, that one especially is very vague, and it would be individual opinions as to what was being, as to what it was being used for, as to whether it was legitimate. I, I would, if it happens, I would prefer a sunset to an oversight, because you can always start it again if you want to, I think. I've never seen, I don't think I've ever seen a tax go away once it was started, though. When you talk about growing the property tax base, I would like to point out that if you have more residents, you need more services, and I don't think that's, that works. And the economy also, you talked about airline, I've seen over 16 years, us pay or give incentives for new airlines to come in, they stay a short time and they leave. I don't know how efficient that is. And I'm very concerned about flat fees. I think it's regressive. I, I still think that the only fair tax is an income tax and that there should be, it should start at a rather high level. So I am concerned about fairness, and I think the voters are also. But I'm glad that you're not, that we're not talking about imposing this without a vote of the people. Thank you.
George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like another round or two.
Oh, I do too.
I've got, I'm going to start off with some questions, and I'd like to go to this, this plan of action summary, and I don't need to know, like, you know, nail down every simple answer right now, but I mean, I would like to know. I'd like to see a list of the fund one-time services and how that adds up to 1.5 million, just to know what those are. And then I see here the use of the fee proceeds. We probably have this somewhere in all the information that we received at some point during the last year, but I'd like to see totals for those, or, you know, subtotals for all of them.
Your last question and this question actually will pretty much mirror itself because your one-time monies also show up here, so we can fill in this blank for you, and that will, I think, get you your other question as well.
Okay, well, I guess my first, really, the first big important question is, I'm a little confused. Are we talking about three, we're trying to raise $3 million a year, but I keep seeing reference to $6 million budget shortfall. Is that over the next six years, or?
Yeah, let me...
And if we raised the $3 million, then we wouldn't have that $6 million gap six years from now?
Let me go through this slide and see if this helps, because it references the $3 million and $6 million. The $6 million is the ongoing gap, which means those are ongoing costs, and so regardless of one-time monies and regardless of restoring the library, our first priority is to close that $6 million gap, so that's no different than what we've been doing for the last four years. Then what we've said is, in addition to that, are there some other things that we also want to continue? There are services that are being provided now but are slotted to go away in subsequent budgets, those are those one-time services you talked about. And then we said, in addition to that, do we want to restore the library back? So that's $800,000. And so if you take those two, and there's still a small portion of the gap that isn't closed by footprint reductions in the parks to stormwater transfer, that's where you get that $3 million. And so that's where we, we've tried to show here that the new service fee actually pays for a relatively small portion of that, closing that gap, plus or minus $700,000 to $800,000 of that. And then there's the 1.5 of one-time and the .8 of restore library to get to the $3 million. Does that help at all?
That helps.
Okay.
Yeah, I still need to wrap my mind around it, but it helps. Okay, then I've got some other questions. This is going to be per, the fee would be per dwelling and per business address, is that correct?
That's what we're currently looking at, yes.
Okay, so, well, there'll be a lot of people that will pay twice. I personally am comfortable with that. There may be some people who won't be. And also, I'm wondering, you know, a lot of apartment units are, the rent includes the utilities, so those people aren't listed with E-Web. And I'm just thinking, you know, we're going to try to capture every unit in an apartment complex. Similarly, there's businesses in some office complexes, they pay their lease, but they don't, they never see the E-Web bill that's taken care of by the manager, the management unit of the property, so we would need to capture those people to have some mechanism.
And that's part of what we still need to work through with E-Web, because this would be a new fee for them, but that's the, those are the kinds of things that we're continuing to work through.
And then I'm just thinking, I'm just, I guess I just have some thoughts. You know, they, E-Web's got the limited income assistance program, but as we know, not everyone who is eligible is on that, so we need to capture those people somehow. And I don't know, maybe a good place to start would be, you know, there's Section 8 housing units, and there's low, low-income housing units, affordable housing units. I believe that the fee definitely needs to be graduated, and I would like to see anybody that's under the federal poverty level per house, $22,000 per household, they should be totally exempt.
Chris?
Thank you. I appreciate this is not an easy conversation. Anytime you're talking about revenues and difficult financial situations, it's a hard conversation. But it reminds me, though, that we need to not think of this as, this is the city Eugene's problem, this is the community's problem. In other words, we're not asking the community to give money to a bunch of bureaucrats sitting in their ivory trailer. We're asking for people to support themselves, and that's really what this is all about, is are you willing to provide some money to, to help yourself, not to just help someone else? And I think the fact that this is us together is really an important element about this, and I think the fact that we ask people to participate by voting on it is a demonstration of that, we're all in this together. To have acted unilaterally would have sent a signal that it's us versus them, whereas it's really all of us together. This money is not intended to do something apart from the city. Everything I see on the list is something that benefits the people who live within the community. They should have a stake in it, and they should have a choice. And it's also not something that occurs at the beginning of this discussion four years ago. This is something that occurs four years and $24 million and 100 positions later. So it's something we come to more as a last resort than a first choice, and I think that's a significant piece of discussion as well. And I also agree, information is critical. If people are not informed about what exactly is at stake and what exactly their role is in what we're doing, then I think we are at odds with what it is that we're trying to do. Which leads me to my last point, and it really circles back around to the first one about being in this together, is I think our ability to, to be able to achieve this, considering what else may be on the ballot, and voters will choose which of these many things on the ballot they choose to support, but I think voters look for stuff that will create benefit for themselves, which is, I think, what we're trying to focus on, but also something that will reflect the trust and the confidence that they have in the people who will do it and administer it. And I know, like many of us here, I've spent my entire term on the council trying to create the sense that we are the trustworthy and thoughtful and deliberate kind of body that you would want to represent your interests in spending the money that will benefit you. And so I think the fact that we would go with something after four years and a lot of cuts and a lot of thought and a lot of conversation says that we don't want to try to just keep using the same old tired systems, that we don't want to try to cut our way out of a problem, but that we are willing to look at something that includes them as a partner and is responsible and thoughtful. And so I'm, I'm interested in continuing the conversation. I absolutely am. There'll still be a lot to talk about, but I think we are at least in a good place.
Greg.
Since this is my maiden voyage, I don't want to pour water on this parade, but I want to, I want to frame my remarks in this context. One, E-Web is raising rates, okay? And I'm hearing a lot, a lot of dissatisfaction and discontent with that among many of my neighbors. Secondly, there are neighbors to the right of me, there are neighbors to the left of me, there are neighbors behind me who are selling their homes or losing their homes right now. People are bunking in with other people, friends, relatives, because their incomes are not raising. Most incomes are flat now, if you can keep your job, if you can keep your income. And we have a number of critical needs that we're facing. It's been mentioned, again, that, you know, we're at a critical juncture with jail bed capacity, we are a critical juncture with public safety, both school districts are probably going to go out for some type of operating levy support. I know that in my ward, the Bethel School District is in desperate need of operation support. Yes, we did pass a capital spending levy, but that did not increase our property taxes in any way. So we were able to do that without the property tax increase happening. The other questions that I might have with this is implementing a tax of this nature costs money. It costs money to administer it, it costs money to collect it. So I would need to have the city manager and staff come back with some figures, more clear figures, about how much that would be, what those costs would look like, because you have to factor that in to that $10 increase. How much is it going to cost to collect? How much is it going to cost to administer? Economic development, I've been in this community for 27 years, and I have seen economic development efforts fall completely flat. We have had a steady stream of businesses and jobs leave this city. Some of them is close to moving across I-5 to the east, and others going completely out of the community and out of the state. So I will want a second round, probably, Mayor, but I, I think that there are a number of other factors that we need to consider prior to putting this before the voters, because what will happen, I fear, is the voters will vote everything down in a May ballot that is a short election.
So I just wanted to say to you that I'm looking for, we try to give some space between this meeting and the 7:30 meeting for us to switch places, so right around 7:00, I'm going to be looking for a motion, so we'll probably have a chance for another round of questions, and then we'll be looking for a motion. I did want to say that even though the art of surveying has changed dramatically, they still have to, it still has to be scientifically valid, they still have to demonstrate that it actually, it does mean what it says it means, sorry, I didn't want to say that. Two is that the Regional Prosperity Plan, which I don't know if you've had a chance to look at, Greg, or not, that we've been working on. I would say it's not like wildly successful, but it's been successful at very strategic and very step at a time, so you, and it's not us, it's all of us, and so you do have, as you heard me say the other day, you do have the university with 17 spinoffs, and many of them staying in the community and adding jobs. You do have the chambers of commerce working on financial investment, and they have been succeeding in doing that, in doing angel conferences with Corvallis. You do have the new community college investment in our downtown and that training program. You do have the one-stop business online shop that helps people get through all the things they need at less cost. And we have coming our way an opportunity for the Willamette, South Willamette Technology Business Accelerator, and so there's a lot out there, and it is, it is the truth, and I think no matter how people, people have, all of us around this table have different opinions about what we think is the best way to do economic development, but you do have to prime the pump a little bit to, to move things, to get things to happen. So that's what we've been doing with our low-interest loans, where people get loans from us, and they do it from Springfield, too, and then they get, they pay them back and they get invested in someone else, and they get invested in someone else, and you see, though, that kind of success with Nencasi is a perfect example of putting in $15 million into our community right now. And there are other examples of that kind of thing going on. So we, I think, we think we're, have taken some significant steps in the right direction, but the challenge for us right now is that we're still losing while we're gaining, so it's, it's, it's continuous and hard work. So I do agree with Claire that we need a little bit more information about economic development, but I, for a while, we turned our faces away from it, and that didn't do us any, any good either. Just wanted to have that out there for you to think about. All right, so now we're going to go around, round two, and I'll just try to go through the same thing. Mike, you're up again.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say first to Beth that I'd like to have a work session poll, please, for creating a comprehensive plan for inviting non-city residents in Santa Clara and River Road to join us in the community. Road to join us in the community. I want to make sure we're talking about this accurately, because I heard a lot of people talk about one tax, and my understanding is that there are two. Is that correct? We're increasing the stormwater fees?
Stormwater fee is an existing fee, yes.
But we're increasing it fairly?
We would be increasing it as we're transitioning the, or transferring the...
And the plan is for us to do that by decision, not by public vote, correct?
That's correct.
So we're increasing fairly dramatically the stormwater fee without a public vote, and I think that can create some backlash for us when we go to ask if we'd like to create a second fee. We also, I don't know that we appropriately polled on the idea of the county coming out at the same time with a levy specifically for the jail. My concern is twofold. I read the numbers, and I've been in contact with folks at the county, and I know that in the 1415 budget, they're looking at almost a complete elimination of rural patrol and down to about 29 jail beds. Folks, that's a much bigger problem than any of the service reductions that we're talking about. And if people have to choose between what we're putting on the ballot and a fix for that, I'm sorry, but I think it's almost irresponsible of us if we were to harm that inadvertently, and I'm really concerned about that. I've also heard from two E-Web board members who said they're not really comfortable with the idea of being our collection agency, or with the idea of our increase in the stormwater fees. So I have concern about how we'll work that out as well. The plan that I would like us to create, the idea that I'd like us to discuss in a work session, and I hope I'll have your support for a work session on that, is around the idea that we have a bad history, we have in the past forced annexation on folks, and instead of inviting them to join us, the mayor and her state of the city was very eloquent when she said, "We're all stronger and we're better together," and she's right. And part of our community is not with us. I'll go through the numbers, because I only have 30 seconds here left in this round. In the next round, I'll go through the numbers, but it works, and it eliminates the entire deficit. We've already got all we need on the books as far as policy to invite them to do it. There's another concern, by the way. I've run professionally all the Springfield races with some other folks around the jail levy. You need a fairly massive communications plan to sell this particular tax option that we're talking about, and I don't believe we'll be effective at doing that. It'll end up being a public information campaign that will be insufficient to sell it. I'll wait for that third round, Mayor.
May you get it, may not. George?
Yeah, I kind of support Mike's idea. I think we should have a work session on this. In fact, during winter break, I received an email from somebody I've known for, I don't know, 35 years, has lived out in the Santa Clara area, and was an adamant opponent to being annexed, and this email basically says, you know, maybe it's time, maybe it's time. So I think Mike's got a real valid point that we really seriously need to look into. Granted, there are going to be people out in the River Road, Santa Clara area that are going to oppose this come hell or high water, but I think there's enough going on that I think it at least deserves a good look and a good discussion while we work on this other part of it at the same time. And that's why that five-year review is a good idea, because the annexation's not going to happen overnight, so maybe this can be a transition until we do build that base. You know, the picture, the definition of the economic development is changing. You know, the low-income revolving loans that we have available and things, you know, my wife spends probably eighty-five to ninety percent of her time on economic development with local businesses that are already here, that are already established, that want to stay here. And these type of revolving, low-income revolving loans are great ideas, so when we're listing these specificities of these different things, those are the type of things we need to list on there. You know, the fire EMS, I mean, that's pretty simple. You've got trucks and fire EMS personnel. But when you start talking about economic development, when you talk about homelessness or the human services, what is that? So we need to break that down so people in the public know ahead of time what we're talking about, where this money's going, in that we're not going to say, okay, it's going to go here, and then six months or a year later say, well, we're going to take this and move it away, like we did with Buckley House, like we did with the gang prevention. We can't, we can't do that with this. This is something that needs to be, you know, pretty rock solid. And then, you know, part of the conversation I had with this pastor earlier was, a majority of the people that he was hearing from are people that are on fixed incomes. They may not qualify for low-income levels, but they're on fixed incomes. And like I said, a two-and-a-half percent decrease in our income with just the first paycheck of the year, you know, what's going to happen with these people that are on fixed incomes? They're just barely making it. So we need to be, we need to be aware of that when we're talking about this.
Okay, we've got, Claire, next?
That's all right, I'll pass.
Alan?
I agree with some of the things that have been set around the table, especially what Chris said, which is this isn't going to pay for a bunch of bureaucrats, this is a community problem. It's paying for services that would be impacted and impact our quality of life, fire, ambulance, library, human services. And I think we have built up a bit of trust with the citizens, that we mean what we say, and that we do what we say, and that there's consequences. I think this is a pretty clear choice, and I think that's the way that it should be put forward. I think these are all worthy ongoing services, and the fact that they're ongoing services means you can't sunset this fee, because then the ongoing services go away unless you have some kind of replacement strategy. So the sunset doesn't make any sense. It is basically permanent, but it has a cap on it, and it has all these other restrictions about what it can be used for and how, and the oversight and all those other things. A couple of other questions about this. The E-Web account, some people have talked about consolidated meters in terms of apartments, in terms of strip malls and commercial buildings, and how that gets played out, because sometimes it's included and sometimes it's not. There's a lot of those, so how do we identify those? And also, this would be a flat fee, right? So a household would pay the same as a very, very large business in the city?
Yes, it's a flat fee, other than a social equity piece, but yes, it's a flat fee.
Plus the social equity, without the social equity piece, so that makes it flat. Not so sure I like that part, but I would also like to get some more information, and maybe describe the economic development part better, that's still unclear to me. And what would be plan B if E-Web says, no, we don't want to do this? I would suspect that what we've talked about is creating our own collection mechanism, pulling back stormwater, and maybe, who are the, having that as the base for being able to create our own mechanism to do it? That would be a loss to E-Web, so there's a trade-off for them if we were with this in our own. So that's taken into consideration in their calculation on whether or not they want to do that, I suspect. And then, if you have any more specifics on the education campaign and the strategy about communicating this? I think Mike's very right. This takes a big campaign to be able to talk about. You know, what we've done so far is just one part of the story, but how this works is sort of complicated, what happens if it fails, and how much is it, and what's it for, are all real critical pieces of this, so that's a very important part, and I don't know if you have any several things I missed out on.
We'll have to get back to you on all of those.
Okay.
We will, we'll get back to you on that.
Betty?
Thank you. How much are you, how about the stormwater fee? How much you think you're increasing it, and will you do that yourself, or do we vote on it?
It would be just like other fees. In this case, you would initially say, yes, you would approve an ordinance that allows that fee to be charged. We would say it's less than ten dollars to move all of that over there. I can't give you the exact number on that.
Stormwater fee would be up to ten dollars?
Uh-huh.
An increase?
Yes.
Wow.
And then, it could be up to ten dollars, it will be less than ten dollars, but it could be up to ten dollars. Partly what we don't know is some of the collection mechanisms and some of those things, so it's hard to nail that specifically down. But it would be like any other stormwater part of the fee that, on an annual basis or on a periodic basis, the stormwater fee gets adjusted. This would be a little bit different, because it would be a different component of that.
What would be added if you transfer that money to the parks? What would be added that we're not doing for parks?
What that does is allow us to continue to maintain the parks that they are at the current service level.
Oh, it wouldn't be adding anything?
We're not adding new things. It keeps us from cutting more. Not cutting more grass, but cutting more services. Deteriorating the service more.
It, I, if it's too, I don't think the grass needs to be cut that often. There are some things that don't need to be done all the time.
And what the survey said was, people are willing to pay ten dollars a month to, in order to maintain, it's been about maintaining what we have, not deteriorating more than what we have, and so we're really focusing on how do we maintain what we have.
But when you're talking about the library, you're talking about adding.
That's the one difference, would be restoring back to those. So that would be a difference.
No, I read something about the parks, about watering or mowing more often or something, but...
We've actually reduced our mowing over the last couple of years.
Well, I think anything that doesn't have permanent effects is better than something that does. To not, to reduce the watering would be pretty bad. Okay, I guess that's all for now.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think that Councilor Clark's idea about annexation is kind of interesting. I could probably support the work session request, but I want to, I want us to work through my four outstanding approved work session requests before we get to that one. And the first one was approved last April about the Riverfront Urban Renewal District, the possibility of sunsetting it, so that would provide the general fund with three-hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, which is 10% of what we're asking for, without raising anyone's taxes, so. But, you know, I've been here for 32 years, and I can't believe, it was, amazed me when I moved here, and it still amazes me, the patchwork.
Yeah.
The checkerboard out there, you know, of like, one house is in the city, and the next two houses are in the county, and so on, it's kooky, and I think that if we could regularize that situation, that'd be good, but after we do the other ones first. I just had a couple things I'd like to say. Education is essential, absolutely essential, to gain voter approval. They have to understand the magnitude of the problem and the consequences if there's no new revenue source, and the polling initially is very favorable. But, you know, we really have to do a big campaign on that, and I'm willing to help with that. I think it definitely needs to be graduated, I'm not sure how we can go about that. That might be a little difficult initially, but I think we could come up with a good scheme for that. And I, on the use of the fee proceeds, the economic development, for me, I really, I mean, these other things are fairly self-explanatory once we understand the amounts and what it's going to go. This economic development thing can, that can be a really mushy area. It is easy, that can be a, it can be a really good thing, and some of the programs are very good. It can also be kind of a gopher hole, and you can just flush, put the money in the hole, and you never see it again. Because, you know, we've been trying to grow the tax base for, ever since I've been on council and beyond, and we've been failing. I mean, we're falling behind, you know, we're not growing it, we're falling, it's actually decreasing the value of the structure. That's not our fault, I think that's due to the economic, the worldwide economic crisis that we're passing through nationally. There's some things that are just simply out of our control, so, but I want to see real specific lists on that. And just for people that may be listening, as a good example of the education, I think SRI did very good. They pointed out that we, our property tax rate is $1.28, dollar twenty-eight per thousand assessed value. Portland's is five dollars. Most communities in Oregon are between three dollars and three dollars and fifty cents. That's how much they collect for their added alarm tax, so we're way out of whack with that. It's not a good service that they're suffering for. And it looks like I've gone over. Thank you.
Mayor, you know, no, no. You know, I concur with you. I think that the public investment that we've had over the years has been generally a good thing, and priming the pump has really kind of helped us to a large degree. My employer investing into downtown Eugene has been, or will be, hopefully, have some real residual positive effects. But a lot of that, we're not going to see for several years down the line. What we have to do, and, you know, this is said all the time, is we have to have some true kind of strategy to really encourage private investment in the community, and genuine private investment. I'm not saying do it at any cost, because we've been through that before with Heineck's, we went through that with some other companies that came and left. We need people who are truly going to be committed to this community, invest this community if they're coming from the outside, and those who are the inside, we need to continue to strongly support them. But I've been involved in political campaigns for a number of years, and I know that if we put this out, we all have to buy off on it, and we have to sell it. That costs money. A, how much is that public education campaign going to cost us? And B, the other question that I haven't heard raised around this table yet, is what happens if we put this out and it fails? What happens, what is the strategy after that? What goes away? What gets cut in the short term as well as the long term? I mean, assume that this list is pretty comprehensive about things that will go away, but there may be also some other things that possibly will be affected by not being able to have that increase in revenue. So I want to see a full list of, you know, services that may be reduced or go away if we don't implement or we don't get an affirmative vote on this measure. And I think that we need to, you know, allow voters to decide what they want to decide. And one point to Councilor Clark's annexation deal. I lived in River Road, Santa Clara for six years. My in-laws live on Maxwell Avenue. It's a very slippery situation. I was on the planning commission when we were doing peak spill annexations. I think it's still a tougher sell than what most people might think.
Okay, Chris, I think you have something you want to add.
Just quickly, and this will actually play off of what Councilor Evans was just saying. In 90 days or less, the city manager will have to come to us with budget proposals for the coming year. And we all know that that budget proposal will include likely a $6 million cut of one kind or another if we don't do anything at all. And we don't know exactly what those cuts are. This has a possible list on it. Last year, at the front of the budget document, you gave us some ideas that we could cut. We stepped back from some of the things that we didn't want to have to cut, but this time around, we may not be able to step back. And so in 150 days, when we have to approve a budget, how much of the economic development, annexation, new growth, new planning, how much of that will be in place in 150 days when we have to pass a budget? And so I'm mindful of the fact that if we don't do anything, when you propose a budget in 90 days, and when we have to pass a budget in 150 days, we'll be cutting, not adding revenue unless we do something, something else. And I don't want to have to raise revenue just to raise revenue, but at the prospect of having to cut another $6 million, when we've already cut all the stuff that was, I won't say easy to cut, but was relatively easier to cut, we're going to be down to making some really, those are going to be some really interesting meetings when we get down to the kind of $6 million that we're going to have to talk about cutting this time. So just a reminder that if we don't do something, it's going to be a really challenging budget conversation this time around.
So before George puts a motion out, the way this works for us is if you decide that you want to put something on the ballot, once you make that vote, then the, our staff have sort of hands off on this. So something for you to consider about, as you, as this moves forward, is what resources do we want to bring to bear to explain this in a time... We all can keep on going if we choose to, but there's a window of when staff can be really helpful to us at all. So that's something for you to think about right now, before we get to the point where they say, can't do it, so. And George, you want to put a motion on the table?
Yes, Mayor. I move to direct the city manager to proceed to a public hearing on February 4th for an ordinance for a monthly city service fee, as proposed at the January 14th council work session.
Second.
Moved in second, whoever that was.
I think.
Betty's role.
Technically, it was supposed to be Betty.
It's supposed to be Betty, yeah.
I didn't get the memo.
Supposed to be Betty. Here is an order.
The vice president or the senior member, or the senior member of the council.
Hold me back. Now you know, too, Greg.
Yeah, you're supposed to know these things without anybody ever telling you, right?
Mayor, I wanted to get to a third round, but I, I don't want to speak specifically to this motion as much as I want, there's some clarifying information I really would like to get a chance to speak to.
Well, the problem with that, Mike, is that everybody else in med has some clarifying information, so if you would speak to the motion, then we're going to vote on the motion.
And you can follow up with us, of course, and we'll always try to come back with clarifying information if it's something we can provide. Of course, we will do that as well.
I'll be voting against the motion, because I think, as I mentioned initially, that this is the wrong way for us to approach this. Even if I thought it were the right way, there's still a better alternative. I'm, I'm hopeful that my colleagues will at least consider the idea of the work session poll that Beth will put out on my behalf, because whether this passes, doesn't pass, goes on the ballot, or doesn't, that at least provides us for another option. I believe an option, Chris, that can be done in time for this year's budget. It will be difficult, but it is possible to do, and will provide sufficient, sufficient revenue so that we don't have to do these increases, both of them, and will, and is something that we can do with only very minor changes to current ordinance, so.
Interested in hearing.
I'll explain that later, I guess.
Or you could send out a.
I will probably write something that you may read.
Yeah, that would be a good thing.
That'd be good.
All right. Any other questions or comments, ready to vote on this? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, in opposition to the passes.
There's that 6 to 2.
Going on, that means it goes on to the public hearing stage. Right. All right.
Well, we've.
All right, thank you all very much. Let's be back at 7.